At this time, we'll call the Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, twenty-two meetings at Jackson County. Our supervisors to order their debit, Mike Stein and myself, other supervisors, Lisa. And Yorin's back from a little R and R. Welcome back. And Luann is here with us, and the first item on our agenda is David Dryer.
On the good morning. I am up on the agenda. It's that time of year again to. The crew of railway maintenance agreement with Iowa DOT on following snow to the McCoketa Cave State Park. Do this annually, seven point two four total miles, point three six two miles each way of falling snow through the park. Total value of the work is one thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars and forty-two cents, essentially no change for last year. Disappointing, but. Nevertheless, we can get ready. Yeah. Fuel goes up. It's not a lot of money, but still.
Well, I guess it depends on how many times we gotta do it. We have heard of their winner. I would make a motion to approve the agreement with DOT. A motion in a second to agree with the DOT's agreement to us, winter maintenance on the case are all in favor. Motion carried.
The second item on our agenda is approval of the calcium chloride quotes. Calcium chloride is used supplemented with sodium chloride and sand that lowers the. Point where we can apply sand that it will still work and melt ice. I received three quotes this year. The lowest quote was twelve dollars and twenty cents a bag. Next close quote was twelve dollars and sixty-four cents a bag. And the highest quote was thirteen dollars and thirty-five cents a bag. That's about a dollar thirteen, a dollar thirteen higher than last year. Actually, the motive. Ten percent. Increase and we purchase about ninety tons of the material. So we recommend approval of purchasing from made chemicals in Milwaukee. Calcium chloride, fifty bags, fifty pound bags, twelve dollars and twenty cents a bag. How many bags is that? Three thousand five hundred and twenty.
We talked about bulk at one time, and that's just not feasible, huh?
I think it's probably something you want to keep sealed until you use it.
Oh, yeah, that's what they said, because it'll turn into like a brick.
Kind of like your kitchen.
Yeah, more sure and yeah. So how do we set as far as inventory from last year? We should be fairly.
We were afraid we weren't going to have room for everything. Because we had required to take so much, but we were, we did have a couple storms, so we're able to. To get everything in, we should be set pretty well.
But we still get about the same amount as we have, or do we back that up?
Think we. I'd have to go see exactly what Stacy ordered last year. Make motion to approve.
I would say, what a motion and a second to approve. You said it was Nick Chemicals? All those in favor? Post motion carrying.
Right on our agenda is a proposal from S two Construction for replacing a bridge with a culvert on two hundred thirty-ninth Avenue. Up on the north side of the county on. In Prairie Springs Township, Section Four. It's an old nineteen-ton steel beam bridge. Replacing with the culverts that my design. They were the only did that submitted at forty-nine thousand, forty-nine dollars and eighty cents.
Run that number again.
Forty-nine thousand, forty-nine dollars and eighty cents.
It's gonna be the cheapest replacement.
It's a pretty good.
Yeah, and is this something that was under five years? This extra?
It was added last year. If I remember correctly.
I should, we can get another extra one in there.
It's about. Sixty-four feet. And establish there. If the steals any good, we will.
Is that a, is that our own crew doing that, or is there an S two or somewhere? Okay. And that one out for biz or we?
Yes, yeah, we solicited proposals from. Two companies.
I would make a motion to approve the insulation of our two thirty-nine. Second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? I motion carry.
And final two items I have are two entrance permits. The first one is for Jim Kramer. Prairie Springs Township on the north side of Centerville Road for a Class C farm entrance. It's a review and recommend for approval.
Motion to approve second. A motion and a second to approve the field entrance for Jim Kramer, all those in favor. I post pushing carry.
And then a final residential entrance permit for Kevin Kush. In Jackson Township, Section Twenty-One off of three hundred forty-eighth Avenue on the east side of the road. And that's been reviewed and estimated as cool. That's a residential.
Residential. Yeah, I mentioned the most of the room. We have a motion in a second to approve the residential entrance for Kevin Kooch. All those in favor? I motion carry. And everything else in general, good?
Yeah, yeah. A little bit of the. Blue going around with people, but otherwise.
No, I didn't. I haven't had any. I think we need to get some information from Sarah. On a right away.
I will do that. Yeah.
She sent an email last week. Yeah, she did.
I didn't get to tell you that. Oh, don't stop to go search. If they didn't, I missed it.
Yeah. No, it was, it was, there was very much information in there.
I will go do that right now.
Basically said what you could and couldn't do, so. Yeah, there was a couple of great areas that maybe, but you know. Yeah. Thanks, David. Okay. At this time, we'll go to visitors and citizens. City manager Josh Bolts with us. Welcome. Thank you, Yorin. David Hyers with us. Welcome. Thank you. So, and Jim Croker too, so welcome to you too, Jim.
Good morning.
I'll let you take off.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks to the sheriff's office for having the felony stop training. Past weeks, so it's. Done a few of them, but they're always a mess, and if you're never practiced, it's even more of a mess. So it's nice they got together and had that. Lisa and I talked last week about a number of, a number of things, but kind of just want to communicate that it is sod. That's coming on the outside. That's a hundred percent certainty on that. What they seeded out was hydroalcohol. Should I guess it's something they have to do for the sod. So that's why it might have been perceived as potentially being seed.
They just started spray painting it green.
It looks that way. So I.
We wouldn't have to.
I scratched my head too, because I remember as a little kid, we, we helped sod Stockton High School's football field back in. It might have been five years.
I'm lost here. What are we talking about? Along the roads. Oh, the hydroalcohol. Sprayed the green.
I don't know what they did or why it looks that way, but sod's coming. That's.
Are they going to level it first? I mean, some of that's pretty rough.
I, I don't know if we even have a roller, but yeah, I think that we should definitely.
Cultimalter type thing. Something needs to just flatten it out. I mean, there's a lot of dips. Especially at Rodney Carson.
We don't have one. We ought to get a name of someone that can, you, you're talking about like maybe the one-ton vibrator that comes along and, and does the, the level.
No, just add some more fill to it and level it out. It's a two-by-four something. The screws are also flat. Actually, who's doing the seeding?
It's, there's no seeding at all. It's already sod. Yeah, it's a sub of chick fry.
So I, I would guess when they come and they have one of these culture things like these seeder guy do, and they just, they're amazing.
Yeah. I hope so, because it'd be nice.
Push all the rocks down to the far end. Yeah. As long as they do that, then. Yeah, it'd still be nice if they could. Kind of clean up some of those slants.
We'll get there.
Okay.
So we're, we're coming from the county and city. We're pretty good neighbors and gonna have that relationship with you guys, so. Let's, let's, let's keep that straight.
So the sections that have gravel, they get broken, right?
Well, we're going through that conversation right now, because I'm asking questions like. Who's gonna take care of these? What's the, what's, what's the, what's the plant here? It's kind of, what are the plant, what's gonna go in the planters? How are you gonna protect it from salt and road grime? I mean, some property around City Hall that looks pretty brown still from those sorts of chemicals, so. That's undetermined, but I think that's a conversation I need to have with the Public Works Committee to really decide where costs lay and what kind of what they want. Because if it, if the, if you do want an extensive series of beds and flowers and all those things, you need to pay someone part-time to have a mobile water source. Probably be out there at five, six AM, someone that's willing to do ten hours a week of that type of work, so there's some operational questions there.
There for a while, the, the master, master gardeners did the watering and taking care of the big planters that were on mainstream.
I'm happy with big plants, because the big plan early had a small area, and they said you really need the water almost every other. When it got really hot, almost every day, you'd have to dry it up so fast. But, yeah.
Do you know what the plans are for our area here that has our memorial? And I'll just hear.
That's, I'm sorry, I didn't fall past that question. That was the third I didn't get answered.
Well, because I don't want you to do anything until you come back to talk to the board. I mean, we want to make sure that that is very appropriate.
Okay.
So I think there's maybe currently some peonies or something, but.
Yeah.
I didn't want them just to throw some sod in it. That's not what the wishes of the board were.
No.
I'm making note of it.
Yeah.
And I believe. I believe Larry handed you a map or some sort of concept idea of what might be possible and dual application for the Destination Iowa program. I don't know if you've reported back what those details are to the board yet, but effectively, the state of Iowa has a hundred million dollar grant program. They're running right now. Applications are opening up in May. And they'll fund forty percent of a project, which means that county, city, whoever would have to have sixty percent of funds in that application ready. And so with the amount of projects that we have going on, we're, we're kind of strapped. And we just need to finish a couple of things, but I've had some advanced conversations with the grant managers of this program and talked about our wastewater treatment plant financing. Which we plan to do through the state's revolving loan fund. And part of that is you get a ten percent reduction alone for the use of a water quality project. So when you look at that image, you might be able to picture the city being able to chip in significant dollars. To create a catch basin for sediment and reduce pump. Sediment in the McCoket River, whatever else Prairie Creek catches. And being able to come up with some sort of combo application for this program that really has a good layout to it. Had a good phone conversation, talked about specifically what funding source this is. And if this can be qualified as a local match for the purposes of the application, no objections whatsoever on their end, so. As of yesterday, I think Larry and I were in some communication about having some sort of dual work session, possibly the mayor. Myself and, and your board here to, to go over some possibilities with that project. And if awarded, being able to come up with something if you were willing, at least to engage in that conversation.
I think we're willing to engage in the conversation, found it out.
Yeah. So I'm open for business at any point. Don't wait to hear from, from Larry. What you guys, what to do or when you want to meet.
Probably the easiest is like the next Tuesday.
Okay.
After we're being here somewhere with no work session. It's easiest to get us all together. Sure, we talked about any of it later this week, but.
That's active. Did I get one of them too, or just you just got? I just thought that if you've got something, you can email out or something like that.
Yeah, so give an example on this SRF loan for. Just a couple of different funding sources we could have had, and we still could have. Pretty confident at this point, we're gonna go the SRM route. And what we'll have, say we end up with a ten million dollar loan for a wastewater treatment plant. That ten percent reductions, a million dollar water quality project. And at this point, the design firm has submitted a number of different water quality projects throughout the area. We've thrown this one into mix and said, hey, even back in the eighteen hundreds, eighteen ninety-three plot maps, Larry was. Intruder's words said, hey, you have to go back and check these plots. There used to be a pond, ten acre lake there to catch. Sediments to catch these things with the dam and, and all those, all those things. So I went back.
Water retention is, is.
Water retention part of it.
Yeah, water quality.
I mean, that would, I mean, the lake was there and it's settled in. There's, I think, what was that figure at nine, nine feet? Almost twelve feet of sediment in that valley since eighteen, you know, eighteen eighties or whenever.
So I looked in our design firm that submitted these project ideas, and she qualified this as well as something that would be able to. Utilized for that. Water quality project reduction. So there's, there's some, we're going some parts together here for the purpose of that Destination Iowa program. But it seems to all be working. And exciting, I think, so.
We'll see. The whole very quick concept is exciting. It could be a part of the whole ma- master plan, I guess. If the funds are available and it's feasible, yes.
And this, our engineer, Alex took shots down there, the, the dam that's there now, it's kind of like a temporary rock dam. That would be raised up about four foot, and that would flood that whole valley to create that ten acre lake. And it would be more of like a stone type area, like Manchester, yes. And a very sweet that runs down the center of it. Yeah. And it's also got a parking lot drawn into it, canoe access ramp and a beach area. I mean, it'd be a recreational improvement too.
So one of the things I might suggest as you're taking a look at this regional and specific approach here is. That the, when we put the master plan together for our Grand Boyd Mississippi River region, the three-county region. Obviously Prairie Creek was one of the phase one of Prairie Creek was one of the elements. We're next Monday, having a meeting with the board, taking a look at some updates to the master plan. I don't know that that was suggested, but we may want to include that in the master plan. So if you do submit any kind of application to the state, that we can point to this master plan to say, hey. You know, we've been talking about this and it's included in our master plan. It's a regional effort. To try to strengthen the application process.
That would be great.
And Josh is on that board. We, he hasn't been here long enough to be at a meeting yet, but Monday will be his first.
I think you could say that, like most of these other grants that you apply for, they want something ready or planned to be developed. And we certainly have, you know, the engineering part of that done. We have the capabilities to be.
Limitary numbers are there already, so. Josh, you have a copy of that?
I do, yeah.
I plug into that system.
For where we're at right now, I think we're sitting pretty good. So I, I'm, I'm excited. I think that, I think you're all hitting it right on the head that that's, that's, I mean, I've visited three times now. It's a wonderful preservation area that they have.
Certainly could be a major.
We'll figure out a time next Tuesday that we can meet after our meeting and discuss it and go from there.
Invite Dave. No.
You're bringing lunch, right?
Also keep getting yeses, right? See you guys.
Thank you.
I just wanted to take a couple of minutes this morning to. Let you know, and I, and I know you should have received an invitation last week, but on Thursday of next week, on May fifth. We are going to be hosting in McCoketa for Jackson County. The partnership with University of Iowa, and there'll be lots of student presentations that afternoon at three o'clock and at four o'clock. At five different locations with a little kind of celebration at the end of that at the McCoketa Brewing Facility. Office or office, I guess. Room. Yes, right. So if you have an RSVP, I would encourage you to RSVP. Please share with others, you know. From our perspective, what I don't want to happen is that these university students and their faculty come to McCoketa. And no one is sitting in those presentations to hear their reports. That would look badly for us. I think this is a real opportunity for us to. It's exciting to have them come here, first of all, to, to, to do this, but I just want to make sure that we have people at each of these. Presentations and, and I know that some of you have been. Hands-on involved in some of these projects along this semester, including the lime kiln and the clean energy project. But there's the river, the McCoketa River watershed report is also going to be here, so we're inviting representatives from. That whole watershed area, nine counties. Or eight others besides Jackson County to participate too. So I don't know how many folks will be willing to travel to, to Jackson County, but I think as the host, we need to make sure we're having a good showing. So if you haven't already RSVP, please do that. And if you have any questions, and some of these things, just so you know, are still changing and evolving as we're putting last things together. We have nine presentations scheduled. We're working on the tenth. And we did have to yesterday change up two of the presentations and locations. Because we had one professor who was supposed to be at two spots at the same time, and that obviously didn't work. So we had to kind of shift that up. But that would be a Preston, a presentation and a Spilo presentation, so we worked it out with them. I think that's all set now on the current invite, but anyhow, I encourage you and others to join us.
We will be there.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jim, were you wishing to address the board?
No. I'll see if there's anything you needed from us or stopping in the. City.
David, would you like to tell Joanne Cabin that she can come in? She might be sitting on that bench. We'll recess until Joanne gets in here. This time we'll reconvene and we're being joined by. Jo- Joanne Cabin and Don Wentworth, and we're Cemetery Appreciation Month.
Yes.
So we have a proclamation in front of us.
Yes.
Dan, do you want to read it?
It says proclamation Cemetery Appreciation Month. Whereas Jackson County residents are aware of the need to preserve the rich heritage contained in Jackson County's pioneer historical cemeteries. And whereas this appreciation of their ancestors' resting places develops a sense of pride in their ancestors' accomplishments. And in their communities. And whereas pride and respect for our pioneers leads us, leads to an interest and concern for the future. It is with this thought in mind that we dedicate this month to the care of our pioneer cemeteries. Now therefore, I, John J. Willie, Chairman of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors. Of Jackson County, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of May twenty-twenty-two as Cemetery Appreciation Month. And call upon the people of Jackson County to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. In witness thereof, I have here and to subscribe my name to be affixed this twenty-sixth day of April twenty-twenty-two. John J. Willie, Chairman, Jackson County Board of Supervisors.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the proclamation. So. Second, a motion in a second to approve the proclamation. All those in favor? I motion carry.
Thank you. Any questions while we're here?
Well, I think we handled most of them last week when Joanne was here and had some good conversation, so. I think we're okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks. Thanks for what you guys do. Okay, next is.
Good morning. This morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two board proceedings. As written by Auditor Smith, the April twentieth, twenty-two closed session meeting minutes. Written by Human Resource Administrator Becky Chapin, authorized publication in the official newspapers.
So moved. A motion in a second to approve the publication of our minutes of our two meetings last week. All those in favor? All right. I motion carry.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of a hundred and. That isn't right.
Hmm, thirty-four, thirty-two?
Hundred and fifty, I thought it was more than. Hundred and surely something else.
Very, it was very like.
Hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixteen cents. I thought it was more than that.
She must have. No, that's what it says right here in the book.
It was more because we took something out last night. Okay, so yes, a hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixteen cents.
Motion to approve.
Second, with a note, half of that was gravel and fuel. Yep, it was. Um, all those in favor? I, I motion carry.
Motion needed to accept and place and file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two meeting.
Moved. Motion in a second to approve the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes. All those in favor? All right. I.
Motion needed to approve the renewal of a Class C liquor license without air service and Sunday sales to the McCoket Country Club at seventeen nine sixty-one Thirty-third Street, McCoket. Effective March sixth, twenty-twenty-two through March fifth, twenty-twenty-three.
Motion to approve. I would second. Motion in the second to approve the liquor license for the McCoket Country Club. All those in favor? I, I motion carry.
Motion needed to approve resolution number eight ninety-one dash zero four dash twenty-six dash twenty-twenty-two for the second half inter-fund operating transfer. For fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two in the sum of six hundred and seven thousand, six hundred dollars. From the Rural Basic Fund, eleven thousand to the Secondary Road Fund, twenty thousand, effective April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two.
And just to note that this is a normal transfer, but this time of the year.
Correct. Nothing, nothing out of ordinary. This is something we have to do.
I would make that motion to approve second.
Have a motion in a second. To make the transfer of six hundred and seven thousand, six hundred dollars to the Rural Basic Fund. All those in favor? I, I.
And that's all that I have for the board today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Luann, are you ready? This time we'll be joined by Luann Koki, our administrative assistant.
Morning. Good morning. All right, calendar for this week. Tomorrow morning, bright and early at seven AM, you all have a Zoom meeting for the community health needs assessment. We do that about once a year. So all of you are scheduled for that. At nine AM is an iris meeting in Dubuque or by Zoom for Larry. And your packet is on your desk. At, at noon tomorrow is a corrections focus group meeting by Zoom also for Larry. And at seven o'clock is a Jackson County EMS Association meeting, and that will be at the hospital here in town. For any of you that want to go to that. Thursday, April twenty-eighth, at nine AM is an RPA meeting in Dubuque for Jack and Larry. At eleven-thirty that morning is the QD conversation, Power of Collective Philanthropy webinar by Zoom for all of you. And from one thirty to six o'clock on Thursday is the Jackson County Hiring Fair. And we've got it on at the fairgrounds of the Kirsten Hall. Friday, April twenty-ninth, at seven AM is a McCoket Leadership Meeting by Zoom for Larry. And our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, May third, at nine AM. For business today, I have another proclamation. I had a request to do a proclamation on May as nurses' month. And try to read that, hope I have enough voice. Whereas registered nurses. Whereas registered nurses in the United States constitute our nation's largest healthcare profession. And whereas the depth and breadth of the registered nursing profession meets the different and emerging health needs, healthcare needs of the American population in a wide range of settings, including the frontline of the pandemic. And whereas the American Nurses Association, as the voice for registered nurses in this country, is working to chart a new course for a healthy nation that relies on increasing access to primary and preventative healthcare and better utilization of all our nation's registered nursing resources. And whereas professional nursing is an indispensable component of the safety and quality of care of hospitalized and non-hospitalized patients. And whereas the demand for registered nursing services will be greater than ever because of the aging of the American population, emerging health challenges, continuing expansion of life sustaining technologies, and the explosive growth of home healthcare services. And whereas more qualified registered nurses are needed in the future to meet the increasingly complex needs of healthcare consumers in this community. And whereas the cost effective, safe and high quality healthcare services provided by registered nurses will be an increasingly important component of the United States healthcare delivery system in the future. And whereas along with the American Nurses Association has declared May as Nurses Month with the theme You Make a Difference. With appreciation for nurses unparalleled impact during the pandemic, their contributions to healthcare and an open invitation to hashtag thank a nurse for enriching our lives and the world we live in. Therefore, be it resolved that the Jackson County Board of Supervisors asked that all residents of Jackson County join us in honoring the registered nurses who care for all of us. And be it further resolved that the residents of Jackson County celebrate the registered nurses' accomplishments and efforts to improve our healthcare system. And show our appreciation for the nation's registered nurses, not just during this month, but at every opportunity throughout the year. In witness whereof, I have here to subscribe my name to be fixed this twenty sixth day of April twenty twenty two, John J. Willie.
Make motion to approve. I would second with a motion in a second to approve the Nurses Month proclamation. All those in favor?
Hi.
Motion carry.
And I say you certainly can't give them enough credit.
No, that's for sure.
Long haul for him.
Yeah.
I also have um. An appointment that I'm looking for approval. There's a letter in your packet from the Preston Public Library. That Jen Schmidt, who was on their board, has recently retired. And they are looking to replace her on the board with Jean Zemwold of Springfield.
And. Jean has been in a position there, correct?
She said she's been a patron of the library for many years and has stated that being on the board would be a good opportunity for her to give back to the community.
I'm glad to make a motion to approve.
The motion is second to approve Jean Zemwold. To be on the Preston Library Board. All those in favor? And I, I motion carry.
So I have.
Thank you.
Okay.
At this time, we'll recess. We have some work sessions with Brian Conley. He has an I and G I S and zoning department and. Anybody have any reports on any of their boards? I am still less RC and D, did hire a new director. And we all know her. Stephanie Sagres will be the new director for the RC and D.
Really?
Good to see. She's accepted the position and she was um. Absolutely. Great in her interview and those of us that were a part of the interview process were really pleased that she applied. And I got an email yesterday that she had accepted the position and. And like everybody else, I couldn't call her because I didn't. Got to go stop down and see if she's at her husband's office because that's what she said. She was doing the bookwork and stuff for him and helping him at his office. So. But we look forward to working with her and. Last night, we, yesterday, we had our early childhood Iowa meeting and right now, the busy thing is renewing the contracts for the upcoming year. We had, I think, eleven or twelve contracts that they spread out with us to review them and and. Mark. Point values so that we can decide, but. Actually, all of them except one was basically shoe wins. They are doing great work and the only one we have is difficult with this. Is the extended day and some of the. Some of the issues that we have with billing and stuff. So we're working that out. And then on my way home from that, I had my iPad on and sat in on the Iowa Works meeting as I was coming home and after I got home and until my computer. My iPad just went blank. So I didn't get, I wasn't there for the adjournment, but Miranda was on flying home from vacation. I, so I was surprised they had it yesterday, but but they did and we have hired our fiscal agent. And uh. It's pretty, they're looking at several different. Processes for um. Helping people find work and basically trying to get the people to come in, add to the workforce offices and apply for work. Is that's. They don't have a lot of people that are coming to the door.
Yeah.
That which. Kind of.
Yes.
Well, with unemployment rate is where it's at. There's not a lot of them up there and some of them just don't want.
That's right.
It's a tough situation for all. Just a brief update for nine one one. I talked to emergency management this morning briefly. Um, and he has applied for several grants for our radio system for law enforcement. So we may have a special nine one one meeting to approve to go ahead. We've got bids for several radio companies and a lot of these grants are time sensitive, so we need to move forward and approve for law enforcement phase one anyway. I think it's working out and I, hopefully, so you got the email from. Bob on the councils talk to.
That was interesting.
Yeah.
I'm glad that that got done.
Yeah, I did. I didn't realize he was behind with that, so. Talk to insurance agent and hope to do, we're good to go and get that confirmed. Otherwise, that project is also moving forward and hope to implement phase two in the near future.
Okay. I guess we won't have to recess since. Since our next appointment is here. This time, we're joined by Ryan Conley, our Jackson County Emergency Emergency Medical Service Coordinator for a department update. Good morning, sir.
Hello. So we just completed the EMT course. It ended, I think it was the thirty first of March. All seven remaining students successfully completed. We only had one dropout due to illness. He was going to miss too much time. So all seven passed the course. Now the next step is to pass the N R E M T. I have two students that have already passed their written N R E M T, which is good. But for the grant, all they need is a certificate stating that they passed the actual course, the EMT class, regardless of whether they get their N R E M T. So I can submit um. Seven of the students' nine hundred dollar registration fee that the services pay, which will exceed our allotment from the Region Five A Grant. Um, we've done that. Let this be the fourth year. So there shouldn't be any problems. Everything was preauthorized prior to the start of the course. With that. We're still, I'm still providing study assistance for the written because that's really the ultimate goal. They don't get an EMT certification unless they pass the written. We have the National Registry Practical Exam, so that's the hands-on portion where they have to show that they can put somebody on backboard, et cetera. That is on five ten. So we have a practice exam on the sixth of May for all of the students. I've got five other proctors lined up. So we can run it just like the National Registry will run it up in Dubuque or Piastah. H A certification classes. I did Baldwin Monmouth First Responders on four twelve. I've got Miles Fire Department scheduled on the fourteenth. And then we continue. The only change with the hospital is I changed the date from Thursday to Monday. On the day, the day. So I'll be up there every Monday as opposed to every Thursday.
And that acronym means.
American Heart Association. So your typical CPR classes are the advanced cardiac life support or pediatric advanced life support. The hospital has a new education director. I'm not sure what her actual title is, and she's actually fantastic. Her name's Jill Peterson. And she is going to utilize, I've always had an open date for the fourth. Previous to now, it's been Thursday. She's going to utilize that. So the fourth Monday in May, I actually have two electrocardiogram classes for interpretation. Set up with the hospital. We have to start prepping for the state of Iowa inspection. For all the services. Preparation for that, and then the ultimate inspection will cover the quarterly continuous quality improvement, which is looking at every run that the services make. So each nine one one call they go on. Uh, I go through and read the narrative, which is the written portion where they kind of paint a picture as to what happened. Take those findings to the doctor. He says, okay, they need education on X, Y, and Z, or you know, if it's super bad, this person doesn't get to use my license anymore. We have not had that happen. Update the personnel roster. We're doing that via Amanda now.
Does, does that last? Examination board, does that include first responders and transportation units? So all of the both?
Yes, sir. Anybody that's got a license to operate as an ambulance. So even if they just take a truck, like quite literally a pickup truck, which I have one service that does. They're licensed as an ambulance, even though they don't have what we would consider a traditional ambulance. But yeah, it'll be all services. Including like fighter and rescue. Personnel rosters, we update this in Amanda. It's a website that the state of Iowa has. It's kind of like a window. Anything I upload, they can also see, which is why our inspections now as opposed to being an hour to two hour per service is essentially done before they get here. The reason, the only reason they really have to show up is to look at outdates and make sure that whatever's supposed to be in the ambulance is. I don't know what they will do on sites. They did not do on sites last time. And they just had me take pictures of the aspirin, the epinephrine, anything with an outdate. I just took pictures. To that same site so they could verify that that was good. So that includes state certifications, any American Heart Association requirements. So if it's a transport ambulance, they might have to have advanced cardiac life support, pediatric advanced life support, but everybody's got to have basic life support CPR. Driving qualifications per their protocol. There's annual skills verification that have to be done. That's not an education. That's quite literally. You have a backboard and they have to show you that they have the means to apply somebody to a backboard appropriately. Scope of practice, so they know what they can and can't do. There was an update to the scope of practice for first responders to now include C collars. Which was just taken away about five years ago. Now they've put that back into the first responder scope of practice. Um, I had to put, we, I was attempting to get the Iowa or the Jackson County EMS Association to become a training center. It was way more labor intensive than what I thought. So I put that on hold during the EMT class. So I'm working with a service director that used to work at N I C C to help me with the paperwork to become a training center. One, that means I don't have to pay N I C C two hundred dollars a year for continuing education credits. Jackson County EMS Association could actually approve the application as well as process the paperwork to send to the state of Iowa. So there's no middleman. I can literally write it, approve it, and send it off to the state without waiting for somebody from N I C C or E I C C to process the paperwork and send it in.
So would there be a requirement that you have to have a facility for that type training center or?
They changed the law. This is twenty two. They changed the law in twenty twenty. I want to say June of twenty twenty. They changed how the training center was designated. You used to have, had to be a hospital or college to be a training center, and they removed that little tidbit from chapter and code. Mainly because nobody was, there was very few colleges that were offering continuing education hours unless you went there.
Sure. Is that something we can charge for also that for continuing yet or not?
Any outside, I mean, well, it's up to you guys, but yeah, I mean technically charge whatever anybody you wanted to. If, you know, you pulled people from Jones County, Union County.
Sure.
Clinton County.
Hopefully in the next couple of years, we'll have some nice facilities that will be available to.
The hospital has a room that's about this big. You can fit a good four or five people in there.
No, but we're going to have a training center. We're going to have a utility building and we're going to have another facility and yeah, I think as extension goes, that's all a piece of the pie. So.
I never, I never understood why E I C C wouldn't work with us when they have a building in McCoqueta. And they would, they will not offer an EMT class. And I'm sure they get tax money for that, don't they?
E I C C, where is that? E I C C, you mean?
Mr. and I would community college.
Oh.
Yeah, they have the, you know, they have the building attached or.
It's right by the hospital.
Yeah.
The high school.
Receive tax money.
Yeah, I, they would not, one, they wouldn't hold one period. Like even if it was them sending an instructor up and charging full price, they would not do that, nor would they allow me to teach it for a discount.
Had some meetings up there for the watershed. Or maybe not the watershed. Because it's cunning way.
That could potentially allow us to offer an EMT course, but I have to get further into it. That's going to be a whole lot. There's going to be a whole, there's going to be more regulations associated with offering an actual college accredited class. I'm mainly hoping at least to start to get just the continuing education aspect done. I had a request from Jackson County Hospice to do a lifting course. I, I talked to them two or three times and made it abundantly clear. I'm not a CNA. I've never been an LPN and I'm certainly not a nurse, but they're looking for emergency moves. Somebody had a heart attack. I'm like, oh, they're in hospice, but I guess I don't know all the rules. So, okay, or if there's a fire in the house, they're looking how to get the person out like we would on fire or an ambulance. So I have that set up for May twelfth. It's going to be like forty five minute over lunch thing.
You did say hospice, right?
Yes, sir.
Are they not a volunteer organization through or working through something else or?
This is the first time I've ever talked to Jackson County Hospice. I honestly. I, I couldn't tell you. I guess I just assumed since they had Jackson County in front of it, it was some sort of county organization.
Well, I think it's a county organization, but.
Nothing to do with us.
No.
I'll have to ask because yeah, if they're somehow for profit, I don't do free education for for profit. I mean.
Well, they charge for their services. Some.
Yeah, I don't know if that's goodwill or, yeah, I don't know.
I can, I can find out because yeah, if they're a for-profit entity, they can at the very least make a donation to Iowa or the Jackson County EMS Association or something. Because of.
Well, it's certainly a great organization.
Yeah, it is.
A great asset to. To the county. So it's interesting to see what they have, but they might just.
There are a lot of people that have used them and.
Yes. Just commend them for what they do.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it would be a difficult job knowing, I mean, all of your patients are going to expire. I mean, everybody's going to expire, but they're absolutely going to expire in the short term. We just did McCoqueta Fire and Rescue on four seven for their OSHA mandated bloodborne pathogens. Plus. And this summer, we're going to hold a national refresher that will qualify up to the paramedic level, which is thirty hours that conform to the national curriculum. We're also going to add in the mandatory American Heart Association certifications, which will be basic life support CPR, advanced cardiac life support, pediatric advanced life support. which will be basic life support CPR, advanced cardiac life support, pediatric advanced life support for any EMS provider in the county. So regardless of whether or not they're first responders, which need twelve credit hours all the way up to a paramedic or critical care paramedic that need thirty to forty five hours. This will meet what they need every two years to do it. So if it's a first responder, the first responders can show up for, you know, two days and they will be done. If they're a critical care paramedic, they would have to show up for all six days. It will be via Zoom, except for the hands-on practical portion of the American Heart Association. So they have to come in and run a mock code for whomever need the actual certification. If they've already got a certification through some other entity or they're not expired, they don't have to show up for the practical hands-on portion. And all of those hours will be supplied through Northeast Iowa Community College. I worked with Jesse Colson, who runs the E M T program to set up the curricula, so it meets the National Registry. And it's something they can adapt and are going to adapt up there. And interestingly, it's Jesse's just next spring will be the first class. N I C C is going to start offering an E M T course in the high school during the day. And I'm interested to see how that's going to go for him. Because with Zoom now, it would be, it would be interesting to see if we couldn't do that here through the high schools. Because they all have I C N rooms, so we can do it from a central location, but the students could remain in their school in I C N room and then we would just have to meet for practicals. Which would be a rotating day, but there's only eight skills practical sessions built into the E M T class. So you could rotate through the high schools to see if we could get more people.
Sounds like a good way maybe to draw some interest, you know.
Introduce them to the process.
And, and, and they get eight college credits. I had, I believe it's two people out of this class, I had two people out of the previous class, three people out of the previous class that you go up and you have to pay N I C C. It's something like fifty to a hundred dollars. And they give you eight college credits, which I don't know what, you know, University of Iowa is going for, but I'm sure it's a darn sight cheaper than, yeah. So they walk in with, you know, damn near a full semester of college under their belt. And if they come back to this area, you might get them on a volunteer service. I know Hudson every time he's back, he's going to the University of Iowa. Every time he's back, he's on Preston and actually even works at the hospital.
It's a good opportunity for them.
We're, I, I, I talked to a lot of people in Clinton and Jones and they're struggling just, I mean, to get anybody and I believe with this seven, what is it, nine, thirteen, so we're twenty two, so we're twenty nine E M Ts in three classes. In the last three and a half years.
Do you have a number of how many of them were retained, hopefully?
We had a gal go into the Air Force. Hudson and the other kid from Miles. So the one, the one gal's in the Air Force and then we had two that are going to the University of Iowa. But Hudson does come back on his breaks to work. I have, I, I would have to check on the boy from Miles, so three are outside of the county at least the majority of the time.
Even for them to have the education as a wherever they're at, you know, they could make a difference.
Yeah, and they're all, I mean, they're all homegrown, so to get them, like I said, dang near a semester of college under their belt is never a bad thing. And when they graduate and come back, hopefully they remember us, join the department, but I, Miles has, Miles has new, nine new E M Ts. Bellevue will have eight. After this class.
Younger people too, right?
And there may be a grant. Jesse's got to see how much. We missed it by a month. We started early to get people in and out during, when they weren't in the fields. There's a chance that they'll have grant money left over because we'll be this first class to start again. And it may be three fifty next time as opposed to nine hundred because they're using this grant money that the college got to apply to off-campus, non-college classes. Which would be huge and we'll have to push that one to see how many people we can get through. Hopefully have a larger class.
Great. Yes, it is. Any questions for Ryan?
I will try.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Absolutely. How about nicer weather?
Maybe you had a pull on that.
I don't know. My nine-year-old is thoroughly sick of this weather. Thank you.
Okay, it looks like we're going to be recessing for work sessions and then reconvening later. Around eleven o'clock, so at this time we'll recess. Do we have a motion to go in the closed session? In the second to go into closed session. All those in favor? This time we'll go back into open session and we have an individual that is in the waiting room that wishes. Did you want to address the board or did you just want to listen or? I guess they're not going to address the board, so we can proceed. During closed session, we discussed potential candidates for a position with the, with Jackson County. Basically, the zoning administrator. And what is the consensus of the board if we're going to offer a position to someone or?
I would make a motion that we offer candidate B a position and have human resources contact this person with a potential salary and terms and conditions of our offer.
We have a motion and a second to make an offer to candidate B. And for Becky Chaiton to communicate with that individual and report back to the board as to whether it's accepted or how how the process is going to go. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Is there any other business to come before the meeting today?
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
I would second. The motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor? I, motion carried.